I'll entertain a motion to reconvene the open session.
Summons.
Mrs. Petrie, second.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy? Showing hands. Five oh. Before we break for the, or take a moment to say the pledge of allegiance, longtime employee of this district, Mr. Chuck Herman, passed away this afternoon. In respect, Mr. Herman, I'd like to just take a moment to say that. Thank you. Join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you call all of us now?
Mr. Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Harrison?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Mrs. Petrie?
Here.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to certify the election results as issued by the verification board. Three-year term. Top vote getter was Lisa Welker with 940. Second was Eric Stevenson with 807. Third was Joellen Stringer, 584. Fourth was Dennis Bradley with 459. Mr. Bob Tebow with 335. Dr. Paul Maynard with 231. Dwayne Ruble with 230. And Mr. Scott Hunter with 126. I'll entertain a motion. Take the motion.
Second.
Mr. Lewis, Mr. Harrison. Any discussion? Mr. Harrison.
Let me tell you that I'm looking forward to work with this.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, please raise your hand to vote to approve. Five zero. Next, our two new elected board members will be given the oath of office by our board secretary, Beth Johnson. If you'd please come forward.
Raise my hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of school director and inform the school district R3, county of Jefferson, state of Missouri, to the best of my ability, according to law.
According to law.
So help me God. Please be seated.
Next is the reorganization of the board, and for that, we turn everything over to Dr. Cornman.
Board policy directs that the board shall organize by the election of a president and vice president. The board shall elect a secretary and a treasurer. The secretary and treasurer may or may not be members of the board. Superintendent will serve as temporary chairperson to conduct the election of president. The process will be as follows. The superintendent will open the floor for nominations. Superintendent will call three times for nominations. A second will be required for each nomination. After the third call for nominations, at which time, we will take a motion to close nominations and proceed by a vote of acclamation. A member of the board shall move to close nominations. It'll take two-thirds majority to pass, which is five votes, to close the floor. A candidate receiving the largest number of votes plurality, but not necessarily majority, will be elected. If there's a tie between two or more nominees, those nominees who did not tie for the highest number of votes will be eliminated from consideration, and the board will vote again, only on the candidates who tied during the previous vote. The person receiving the highest number of votes, once again, plurality, not necessarily the majority, will be elected. Does any member object with this process? All right, we will proceed. The floor is now open for the nomination of President of the R3 Board of Education.
I nominate John Stewart.
Got a motion on the floor to nominate John Stewart. Need a second? Dan McCarthy, Bo Harrison. Second call. Lisa Welker. Need a second? Motion made by Eric Stevenson, seconded by Beth Petrie for Lisa Welker. I entertain a motion for nominations to cease and proceed by a vote of acclamation.
Make the motion.
John Lewis with a motion. Need a second? Bo Harrison. All in favor, please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, oh. The floor is now closed. All right, all in favor, John Stewart for Board R3 President. Raise your hand, please. One, two, three, four. And for Lisa Welker, one, two, three. John Stewart has been elected for President. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next following the same process, we will accept nominations for Vice President.
Make the motion, Dan McCarthy. John Lewis nominates Dan McCarthy.
Need a second?
Need a second? Okay, um, second call for nominations, Vice President.
I'll nominate Beth Petrie.
Beth Petrie nominated by Eric Stevenson. Need a second? Lisa Welker's second. Third call for Vice President, nominations.
Make the motion, cease.
Motion has been made to cease nominations for Vice President. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stevenson. It's been motioned and seconded to cease nominations for Vice President and it be elected by acclamation. Raise your right hand to cease nominations. Seven, zero. Now we have Mr. McCarthy and Mrs. Petrie, right? There are nominations for Vice President. Those in favor of Mr. McCarthy, raise your hand. Those in favor of Ms. Petrie?
Two, four, ten.
Those abstaining. Okay, I guess you ended abstaining at this point. Mr. McCarthy's been elected Vice President. We'll now open nominations in the same fashion for Treasurer of the R3 School Board. I would nominate John Lewis as Treasurer.
I'll second.
Made by me, seconded by Dan McCarthy. I'll entertain second nomination, second call, Treasurer. Third call for nominations for Treasurer. It's a highly sought-after position.
You're getting extra money.
I will entertain a motion that nomination cease and that John Lewis be elected Treasurer by acclamation as first by Dan McCarthy, or first by me and seconded by Dan McCarthy. Motion made by Dan McCarthy, second. I will second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven of them. Congratulations, gentlemen. Now we have the Board of Education Secretary and Custodian of Records. I will entertain nominations for the Office of Secretary and Custodian of Records for the R3 Board of Education. Mr. Harrison.
I'd like for us to put out that there are new Secretaries for the Board only. I don't want her connected with the current Superintendent.
Well, we're here considering nominations for the Office of Secretary.
For the Secretary. That's what I want.
Well, we have to elect somebody this evening for this position.
I'm not going to meet Beth Ann.
Mrs. Petrie nominates Beth Ann Johnson as Secretary and Custodian of Records. Second, John Lewis.
Excuse me. Does it say that? No.
When you reorganize, you have to elect, you have to fill all the offices.
I never did understand it that way.
We always have to have the custodian of records. Well, it's been...
It doesn't have to be a member of the board, right?
No. But I'm the Secretary. And she's not, she don't have to be the...
So it's...
The custodian of records.
So I'm...
I just want her separate.
We need to talk about that in the executive session and job duties, I would think. So I will...
So it should depend on how we decide in a closed session.
We'll have to talk about it in a closed session.
Yeah, and then we can nominate or get personally a Secretary for...
We can talk about it in a closed session. So, second call of nominations for Office of Secretary and Custodian of Records. Third call for nominations. Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to nomination cease and that Beth Ann Johnson be elected Board of Education Secretary and Custodian of Records by acclamation as was made by Beth Petrie and John Lewis.
Make the motion.
John Lewis, second. Eric Stevenson. All those in favor? Those opposed? Mr. Harrison, so six, one. Yes. Okay, next, we need a resolution to change, you have a resolution to change checking count signatures. I need a motion. But it's the President and the Treasurer sign over. Check. Lisa Welker and Mr. Harrison. The discussion. Mr. Harrison. No discussion? All those in favor? Seven, zero. Thank you. All right. Next we have...
What do you got?
Special recognitions.
No, I don't want to come up with something for this, back into the nominations. We've always voted that we give the President the fire for an emergency. If something happens and the Superintendent needs the directive, he can give the directive on emergencies. We've always voted that way before. All of a sudden, he got lost.
And I'm not so sure I feel comfortable with that personally. Because, I mean, actually, in board policy, I believe, in certain situations, the Superintendent has the authority to make decisions.
Wait a minute. We did not follow, did you hear what the oath was? The state and federal laws? Not the policies. We changed that.
Our policies are part of state law, though. Created by state law.
It might be, but we don't follow that. We've always did this. We've always done it, we voted to give the guy the fire in emergencies.
Can we talk about this in new business, then? Because it's not on the agenda tonight. Can we talk about it in new business?
It's in where we should be voting for it. This is what I'm trying to get...
We can talk about it in new business and discuss it, and then if there's a motion and a second, then we can take a vote.
You know, because this is how things get filed up. The President can do whatever he wants.
No.
Oh, yes, he can.
No.
But he's witnessed it for three or four years.
The Board is a four, it's a seven-member, and it takes four to vote, well, it takes a majority of the Board to vote to make things happen.
I witnessed this for six years. And I'm getting real tired of it.
Special recognitions. We'd like to recognize and thank Dr. Paul Maynard and Joellen Stringer for their seven years of service to the district. Their leadership and dedication have inspired and empowered students and staff to succeed, contributing considerably to the growth and prosperity of our district. Thank you to those two for their years. Next, I could have those members of the junior high archery team come on forward. Come on up.
Come on down.
Down here. Down. The caption, well, they were, the Hillsboro Junior High Archery Team makes the leader again. The caption was titled, "Sharp Archers," and read, "The Hillsboro Middle School Archery Team finished second out of 27 teams at the Missouri State Archery Tournament at Osage Beach. The Hawks tallied 3,247 points and were led by Madison Ginge, who shot a 288 out of a possible 300, to finish second among middle school girls and fourth among the 597 female competitors at the event. The next four top finishers for the Hawks were Tori Lacy, Donald Halupka, did I say that right?
Halupka.
Halupka?
Yeah.
Taylor Husky, and Mitchell Hickson. For the last three years, Coach Dan Gronborg's Archers have placed in the top three at the state competition. The junior high appreciates all of their hard work, putting in over 100 hours practicing and competing. We are proud to have these kids represent our school." We're starting something new as a recognition by the Board of an individual, and in this case, the first is for a team, and so we're handing out medals, and this is a team medal. There's only one, so it's for the whole team, and you can hang it with, I assume you got some huge trophy. Yeah. So you can display it with your trophies, so...
Fantastic. I like you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Of course, we have several members who are not here with us tonight, but you guys did a great job coming. Thank you. All right. Congratulations. So, we have no visitors signed up to address the Board, so moving on to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Okay. I would move to pull out the minutes that Eric and Lisa gave.
Okay, so you want to pull...
Separate those two items.
So, okay, so, A1 and A2, right? Come down to where at the bottom of several... So, okay, so this first motion is going to approve the financial report for March 2015, attendance data, investment data, and summary of accounts. I want to entertain a motion to approve action items by consent A, B, C, D, and E. Make the motion. John Lewis first, seconded by Beth Petrie. Any discussions? Hearing none, please raise your hand. Vote for approval. Any against? Seven, oh. Okay, next we have action items by consent A, A1 and A2, from the Board of Education, minutes from the calendar hearing, March 26th, and from the meeting of March 26, 2015, just those two items. So I'll entertain a motion. Beth Petrie first, John Lewis second. Any discussion on the minutes from those two meetings? Hearing none, please raise your hand for the approval. Five, those opposed? Those abstaining? Five, zero, two. Motion passes. Next, we have reports. Superintendent's report. Dr. Cornman.
Thank you, sir. We have, first, I want to congratulate both new members, wish you the best of luck, and look forward to working with you in our collective board. Also, I want to start by saying, I publicly want to thank Mrs. Tlappik. Will you wave, Mrs. Tlappik? Mrs. Tlappik's been fighting termites in her kindergarten classroom, and I'm not talking about her kiddos, I'm talking about the physical, actual termite. And her classroom is the turtles, so I figured termites, turtles, but she has definitely been very adamant that that will not be the case. But I do want to publicly thank her for being so flexible, moving her classroom. It takes a lot to uproot your little ones and that routine that they have. We've had her in the music room for a while, and we've worked to fix that, but I think they're coming back to say hello again. So that's a plan. I'll have Mr. Vess update you on that. We're fighting the termites. The current bid from Oregon is $11,000 to take care of the termites, so we're trying to get a second bid on that, and I'll have Ray, I'll defer to him, or defer to him, to let him address that here shortly. When you read through the superintendent's report, there's a lot of information in there. First of, was an article that I thought was great from, actually, Jefferson City, from archerywire.com, about all the kids and how they scored, and actually picked out some of the high-score winners for our district, and mentioned specifically Hillsboro Junior High, Surcoxy Middle School, and Surcoxy, Missouri, and Southwest. Has always been a high-scoring school, and Hillsboro, edge of the mouth this year, is very proud of their efforts. So you have, as you glance down through there, you'll see that it's already been mentioned. Madison Ginge took second overall. So very proud of them and their success as a team. I do know the parents have been talking to us about the possibility of looking into the high school archery team next, and I don't know that to Mr. Gronborg can be spread that thin, but his kids have been very successful with that. I have referred all the parents to Mr. Marino and all the extra-duty committees, because any committee, any extra-duty added, let's go through that committee first. So we definitely appreciate their hard work. Also, in the report, you're going to see the budget, how the budget's moving quickly through all of the House and Legislature. I do want to point out that it's kind of at a stalemate right now. They're kind of holding that on the back burner until they get the transportation bill or transfer bill ratified. There's a House version and a Senate version, and until they come together, work out their kinks, they're holding off on approving a budget. They don't know how much money is going to go into the school transfer. Another thing, if you look on down underneath the state auditor's suggestion, there's a bill on the floor currently being debated, and it looks like it's going to pass this year, and it talks about school districts needing to have an independent financial advisor in order to go with bonds and pass bonds and bond initiative issues, whether you have a negotiated sale or you have a qualified bidding sale. So when you read through this information, you see that we're already getting that done. We've already had financial, independent financial advisors. So just wanted to include that for your review. A lot of bills are being on the floor. I've left House Committee, bills that have been approved, that came from MSBA, for you to glance at. Also, want to direct your attention to the 2016 assessment funding, which is under the Missouri Legislative Bulletin. There, $4.2 million was taken away from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to, and transferred to the foundation formula which pays public schools. There's a big debate on pulling that money back out. The money's been tied to ending the smarter balance consortium fees and dues, or anything associated with the Common Core. There's a big debate on getting that money back in, and it's in House Bill 2, so pay very close attention to that. What would wind up happening is it would force Missouri to go to a third assessment in three years. So we started with MAP one-way, now we have online assessment, now they're talking about moving to the Iowa test of basic skills for one year. So we have three years of skewed data that actually go into our annual performance report. So it's just a big conundrum that they're trying to work through. So please pay close attention to that. I'll keep you updated accordingly. The most recent update came today, and it's, the transfers is really the biggest issue. What they're trying to do is allow students, rather than transferring from unaccredited districts, transfer within a district to unaccredited schools. For example, if the intermediate was a K6, the primary K6, and our elementary K6, if one of those was not performing, and they're not, we're all performing very well, but if we weren't, they could go to one of those other buildings within our district. Some districts like us do not have that designation, whereas other districts in larger communities have multiple elementary schools. So that is a huge debate. They're also talking about enlarging charter schools, and they're talking about open enrollment within school districts. So it's a big issue that they're trying to work through, so again, I'll keep you up to date on that. One last thing. We're having some difficulty, and Ray might want to address this as well. We've done some research on the two trees, where's Mr. Allison? He might want to speak to this. The two trees out by the victory bell get full of bag worms and web worms that tend to come down and talk to the kids. Fall in their hair, they're dropping red berries that the birds tend to love, and then the birds leave whatever for us to clean up, all around where our kids are coming into the building. The student council is looking to beautify that area, and Ray Vess is, for the past couple of years, wanting to remove those trees and plant back some other trees more appealing to the district with the help of the junior high student council. I've been researching, because the last thing we want to do is take out a tree that was planted in recognition of someone we cannot find, right, Mr. Allison? They've been doing the research, and Ray, those trees have not been planted, to our knowledge, to recognize, and if anyone in the public knows, get with us, but we are looking to take those trees out. And that's all information at the bottom of upcoming events, familiarize yourself with, especially graduation. Yes, sir.
Why can't about this time of the year, maintenance knows this is going to happen, why can't maintenance go over there and spray the trees? That's what I do, or done every year, to get on a certain wall of cherry trees or pear trees or whatever, the wild, and you got to go and you got to spray them.
I can answer that for you, sir. We have never set a program in this district to do that, let's say, so it has not been something to, that we have looked at. It can be something we can look at, but to spray trees like that to control... It can be something we can look at, but to spray trees like that, to control those two types of insects, is a insecticide, that basically you have to be very cautious, since we have so many children in this district.
That's right, but here's the other thing, it's just like the termites, we have to document it. That means you have to go and probably get into the architect, but them bag worms, what a lot of people do is pull them off and burn them.
Correct.
Okay? And I just know that I had them around my house, where they would destroy a tree and go spray them. You can see what it is, that you're spraying, do it on a Friday night, it's got the, this Monday morning, I, you know, I just, I'd hate to see them trees just cut down, because nobody wants to spray them, right? I mean, that's just what I, my opinion on it.
Right, and at this present point, so the board is aware of it and so forth, you're going to have to check with Mr. Allison, but part of these trees are partly dead already now because of that problem, you know, so you're looking at a damaged tree already that needs to be addressed.
But you don't kill a tree. They're going to, if you ain't going to spray them, the bag worms are eat every leaf off of that thing.
That's right.
Okay?
They can.
The limbs will come back. If you take it and keep that tree sprayed, then it will come back. There's no need to just cause somebody wants to cut down a tree, now this is just me saying this, we shouldn't cut down trees.
Oh, we don't want to just cut down trees, by no means, okay? And when we do cut down trees, we replant them, a different style, a different type, so we just don't take trees out for no reason whatsoever. But these trees here, that as Dr. Kornman was trying to point out to the board and the public, is a factor that these trees cause a pretty good mess. We're tracking in the berry stains into the floors, into a mess, into our buildings. These are just not the right type of tree to have in this facility, to be quite honest with you. You know, if they're out there in the fields, they look great, but really, the doors, this location, since they went through, and we designed the island and the little courtyard right there with the Liberty Bell and so forth, to really be honest with you, we need to make it look presentable, in our opinion. And I think the junior high student council and the Ironside over there is willing to help us do that, and you know, to me, that's a blessing to have. So, I, you know, and I think these trees are a nuisance right now.
What kind of trees are they?
I'm sorry?
What kind of trees?
It's like a crab out through the cover. So, they make lots of different messes, and they all look pretty at certain times of year, because most of the time, they've got flowers, leaves falling, berries falling. It makes a pretty good-
And they're beautiful when they're blooming.
When, yes, with small windows.
So, we cut them down, because we don't want to put up with the little mess, and put us a little something around there to keep the kids out, or we don't want to let the kids stay out of there.
Well, we don't want to get the kids out there, that's-
Well, but what I'm saying is, nobody wants to take the initiative to do something that says, "Don't go around them trees right now." Wait till-
Well, we have to, because our student drop-off is on the opposite side of this, and they walk through there to come across-
But they can walk around it.
Mr. Allison?
We got buses.
Can I ask your opinion on-
Sure.
Your opinion, your both students' opinions of the-
I got a lot of opinions, you can tell me when to stop.
Yeah, you probably do.
Before Coach Stigwurst passed away, that island was all grass.
Before?
Coach Stigwurst passed away, and we put the concrete and the victory bell and the bricks in there. It was all grass. The kids would get dropped off, especially in the springtime, when it was soupy, because there's a curb all the way around that entire thing, and it would get very marshy and swampy. So, what Dr. Isaacson and I started noticing is, the parents would drop their kids off, the kids would walk around and through multiple lanes of buses to get to the front door, because otherwise, they would walk through the mud where the trees were. So, we put the sidewalk in there, so that when parents dropped their kid off, they can literally take the sidewalk, cutting diagonally through the island, cross the crosswalk right in front of us at the front doors and enter the building without having to cross through the bus lines. So, that was our primary reason for putting that sidewalk in. The issue with that is, it goes diagonally through those two trees. All the droppings fall onto the sidewalk, where if it was in the grass, it wouldn't be as big a deal, it falls on sidewalks. Second part of that, and again, I'm 6'4", but as our eighth graders grow, from little seventh graders to big eighth graders, they start having to duck and get poked in the face all the time by the low-hanging branches. Ray's group does a great job, they come through and trim them up every spring, but it's one of those trees that never goes any further up, it continues to branch out down low and makes it hard to walk underneath. We didn't have the sidewalk there, it wouldn't be an issue, the kids would be walking around, or they would be walking through mud. We've noticed about a third of the northern side of that, I think Ray, is dead. There were some guys up there looking at it today, and we just noticed they just seem to be getting worse and more shaped. So, the thought was, well, let's put something nicer in there that's easier to walk through and more appealing to the kids, as they have to traffic back and forth from the drop-off to the front door.
Going to move on with the rest of your report?
No, I've got something to say. I would like to say something. How come is it every time something comes up, I'm the only one that says anything about, why, why this, or why that? Nobody wants to say anybody about cutting down a tree. Them trees, I've been under them trees, I got, what is them old famosa trees? They make a mess. I'm not cutting down that famosa tree, because I don't want to get that stuff off my feet and tracked into my house. I got a vacuum cleaner, I can clean it, but I love that tree. And that tree makes-
Is this a report, this is a report, or is this an action?
No, they want to cut them down, they want our permission to cut them down.
No. We're telling you it's an issue. We're saying it's an issue that we're not-
We have a-
We have an arborist here.
Well, then I'm telling you that, I think that issue shouldn't even come to this board.
It's just in a report, they're just letting us know, so that we're informed of-
Is this something, we have a facility meeting Friday?
Thursday?
Thursday or Friday. Is it something that the facility can meet over there for a little bit, just to get a a raw-
Yeah, I think that's, anything like that, any time you touch these buildings, it should come to the facility to meet, because you walk around, and you'll see what they painted, they done this, they done that, somebody put up a fence, you know, all kinds of stuff that they do, and you never, we have no idea.
Part of that too, is we hired Ray Best and his whole department to take care of that and to manage that.
Well, we've got 35,000 kids, and how many parents is in this district? That maybe, the majority of them have no like trees. Should we cut them down and say heck with these people? Because it's the district's trees, it's not the maintenance's trees, or the junior highs' trees, or anybody else's.
So, you're only going to talk about that at the maintenance committee meeting Thursday or Friday, whatever day. Can we move on with this report, sir?
Try to do.
Mr. Best?
Okay, thank you, and welcome, new director. To follow up with Dr. Kornman, concerning the termites and so forth issue, we have as a primary going on at this present point, as Dr. Kornman pointed out, we do have the information from Oregon already, we're waiting on information from Terrex. They were out Friday, doing all their measurements and so forth, so we're waiting on the confirmation to come back from them. At this time, we have a dress that we're trying to maintain them, it's a good time until they get here with their professional health and professional chemicals. It will be safe for the children, they will not put in this out probably till Friday anyway, or they do all this, or they do have to do drilling into the concrete and so forth as well, so it'll be one of the two companies. Dr. Kornman, I'm sure will keep you informed, as I will keep him informed, looking at pricing and so forth, because we want the job done correctly, but readily, so that's where we stand on that. If you want to have any questions, please let me know.
Mr. Harrison?
I'm sorry, folks, but I'm the only one who knows how to talk, I guess, I don't know. I seen a documentary on them, okay?
Yes.
Where they've got some kind of ultrasound, you don't have to tear up the walls or anything to know that they're there, and once you see it in flight, you know that they're there.
Correct.
Okay? And this is the way it was explained to me, they were eating the glue, okay? And they, they just didn't start this year, because the big old patch that I seen, they ain't no way that they just started this year with that. This has been going on for a long time, and nobody's ever said anything about it. You can't expect a principal to know about termites and everything else, that's not their job, it's education. So, that's what bothers me about this, is nobody says a thing. All of a sudden, they're knocking the wall down, and that's costing the taxpayers money. Now, I'm not mad, I'm just saying, I'm telling you how it is. This stuff should have never got this far, it's just like the leak I was telling you about, 10 years, 10 years this thing's been leaking, and nobody's ever done anything about it in the library, none.
Well, it's fixed now.
Well, good.
Took care of that one.
Well, good, I'm glad it's fixed.
We had termites last year, both, but they weren't to this extent. They were small patches down the first grade hall, but they weren't in the walls, they were coming up, well, Ray can talk about it.
On the bill of the colony, it's like a lot of other insects, until they get to that point where they got to force themselves out, they could be in the walls for 10 years. So, yeah, I mean, that, it's been an issue for many years in that facilities, because, you know, as we dig into information, yes, a little bit better, we're surveying the war tables and the different, and the lands sculptures that no one's ever looked before. You're correct.
Yeah.
But that's what we're doing now, we're learning how to read stuff, we're utilizing knowledge from other people, internet, so forth, so yes, we have learned a lot. We are addressing them, it's just that we are, yes, behind, but that's why we're asking-
You're like 2 years late.
You're correct on that, but that's why we're trying to change that.
But if you don't know it's there, like I just said, if you don't, if they stay in the wall and you don't know it's there.
You said you had a termite, well, last year, you should have talked about that last year.
So, we addressed it last year, and we stopped it, and we didn't see them, so we took upon ourselves that we had to take care of that issue.
Yeah.
Just like you do a lot of times, you assume, you know?
No, you assume, is you got to take and get somebody out here that knows something about termites and knows how to-
And we are now.
No, you aren't now.
Yes.
But you was knocking holes in the walls and stuff like that, that's what I'm saying.
You have to get them out there somewhere online, or you're just going to make it worse.
You kill them.
I think what both parties are saying is being proactive rather than reacting.
All right.
Yeah, it's just, it's simple.
Can we move on with the rest of Mr. Best's report?
I got one more thing.
They're dealing with the termites. Mr. Best?
All right, so that's where we're at on that. Just wanted the board to know that we did get the fire doors replaced at the high school, this was on the south side of the high school, those are all back up to code compliance now. So, Music, which is our insurance company, they should be coming in within the next month or two to do their normal survey, they do a survey every about 18 to 20 months, and we should be starting to see that report as well. So, we will see them come in, check the buildings every little inch, but at least that will be clarified. We have done about 97 work orders in the last month, as you know, I did send in the packet, kind of some of the items we did do last quarter, the third quarter, just for your informational purposes. If there's any questions on that, please let me know. And we are trying to work on getting the complex, the high school complex, Mr. Marino's been trying to help us get things looking a little better and cleaner, of course, and we're still trying to just keep that as well for the taxpayers and so forth. So, we do have, which we probably convinced on, talked about at the meeting on Thursday with the facility committee, I did put together a little bit, our district architect, Roy, with art images, is with us to see, make anyone has any questions, but we have put together a project manual, this will be related to the project, ceiling project, Masonic Ceiling Project for the primary. There's some information there that we needed some dates set and so forth, we put together a summary, have for you folks to look at this evening, if you choose to let the committee look at on Thursday, set those dates, they'll be fine, we would like to get received forward as soon as possible. This is the first step, have to have all this information together before we go to RFP. And then the next step will be RFPs, we'll get it out there, we would like to try to push forward, so for the next board meeting, we will both present to you the RFP, and hopefully make a decision on either team or contract or service that will be doing this project. So, we will try to use that. If anyone has any questions, again, if you have the architect here with us tonight.
Thanks, Mr. Best.
Still waiting there.
Yes, sir.
Over to that new sports complex.
Yes.
Walked down them steps, where they got the pipe going into the concrete, they left a lip, about that much, water gets in there and pops out, anything, if you're going down, anything to the lip, it'll pop it out, and it's been popping out all over the place, our walls are popping out, and I have not seen no kind of notes or any reports saying that we're going to take care of this stuff.
We did address some of them, give them last year, and we had the same issue at the elementary on the stairwell that goes down to the playground as well, and we did address some of those as well last year. So, we will look at more of those, keep going, you'll still get those for a little while.
But we're going to fix these.
I'll get a crew on them, start tomorrow again.
You know, and these gates, these gates are left open. We need to put locks on them, everybody in the brother shouldn't have locks to these keys around that track.
They shouldn't have that, but the only time those gates are open is usually for events, usually, or that the, maybe the coaches are going out for gym class, but usually we also have security at evening that will check those.
You know, I go over there, I go over there a lot, and I see these, these gates open, and the coach shouldn't have keys to every one of them gates, there's no way, nobody should, except maybe Eddie.
Okay.
He's the only one.
Our event, our event, the stadium as well has one, because he has to unlock, proper bike-
To get in, that's that big gate, or that other gate, but I'm talking about the one around the track, where people can walk right in there in that track, they like to walk that track.
Yes.
But that's fine with me, but you don't open up every gate there is, you know, we've had this issue when we first got it.
I'll try to do it more often, but of course, I know, normally, they try to maintain, keep the double gates locked up as much as possible unless there's events.
It's getting better.
Mr. Best?
And the parking signs, I went through there the other day, and there's a bus, being an old man, I backed out, and when another car was coming, I put the car in jeopardy because there was a bus in it where he shouldn't have been. I should have done what I've done, but here's the bus parked up against the fence that says no parking. They park on the other side, and there's a fire lane, and that's a no parking. And I'll bet you I bring this up all the time, and nothing ever happens, about where they park and where they don't park, handicap, and just telling you.
That's a different topic, though.
Thank you, Mr. Best.
Thanks, Ray. See you Thursday.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next report.
Not the buses.
Next report is 2015 commencement exercises, this is, you'll bring, are you, can you discuss exercises, Dr. Feeneston here?
Before you, it's just a basic agenda, the only difference, excuse me, the only difference from previous years, this year is Jefferson College will give us 50% of our money back for implement weather, we just have to let them know by 9:00.
Oh, okay.
That day, or?
Yes, sir, that day.
Wow.
9:00, you might as well assume it.
I just have a question. Last year after graduation, we had a meeting, and it was kind of the consensus of the board to shorten that exercise graduation program, and it was exactly the same this year, so I was asking, you know, what concessions have been made to shorten?
You need to know which, which part of that.
Well, it was just, as we talked, it was like, I forgot now how long it was.
I don't know the conversation.
About two hours.
And-
Why, why would you want to shorten it?
I was just.
I'm not going nowhere. I'm retired. You know, that, that's sort of my speech. That's what I'm saying. If somebody, no matter who it is, if I decide I don't want to do it like this no more, then I do it. I do it. There's no need of this stuff just to, to go and do something for me. We got everybody else.
Simply a question.
It was simply a question because we had that conversation.
Why, why keep doing this stuff? Let it go on as long as it wants. And I'm not getting on you. I'm just.
Oh, well.
Thank you, Mrs. Hildebrandt. Does anybody have any questions regarding commencement for, Mrs. Hildebrandt, or anybody? Sir?
Uh, Mrs. Hildebrandt.
Yes.
You've noticed that I haven't sat up there on the stage?
Correct.
Okay. You see how big I am? You know, I don't want to be stuck between Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Carnahan and pushed in there. How about us getting some people off that stage where we could sit there comfortable? Uh, that's the reason why you don't see me sit up there. I am not gonna sit up there with twenty different people just to, somebody wants to do it. And, and they should take, and, and take about four or five of them people off of there that don't need to be there. And, and the other thing is turn that stage back the way it was where the board members don't have that sun shining in their eyes.
You start at seven thirty, so the sun's really not shining.
I asked that same question and I was told that they wanted, because of the picture-taking purposes of the parents, they termed it so the sun is facing us, so it's at the parents' back when they're taking pictures. Otherwise, if parents are, are shooting pictures into the sun and of their graduate.
Well, then we can go up the other way, up the other steps.
And I believe also you got more chairs on the field facing the sun, did you not?
Yes.
So, it allows for more, um, people to sit on the field with chairs and the way we have the stage facing the sun.
I think the biggest issue is how we're getting people on the field, the stamps. Uh, do we have anything in place to deal with the risk bands to get onto the field? I remember the board had a concern about that. I do remember that.
Yeah, because it was just, yeah, last year it was just tickets handed out and they were handing back over.
Tickets and people passing tickets to get back in.
I was not aware of that, of that concern.
I remember the board talking about that. So, let's talk, let's talk about that as administrative teams figuring out how we can better, because that's how we ran out of chairs the first time. If you remember, we had a sit and rate. I see a lot of heads nodding to go get more chairs because we ran out because people were passing their tickets back to their buddy to get them in.
Well, I think the board should do that.
Hand out tickets?
Well, discuss that and see what we want to do.
The board did last year.
Well, we'll do it again then.
Okay. All right. Next, we have a report from the instructional coaches.
I'm just briefly going to say a couple of things. First of all, we appreciate the opportunity to be able to discuss what we do as instructional coaches. I say we, I'm kind of hanging on to their shirt tails. Um, but, uh, we have three instructional coaches, Mary Levy, and she had an emergency come up tonight, so she's unable to be here. Leslie Marchetti, and then Leanne Foreman. But you might have noticed in your board packets that there were three different, uh, charts for you to look at. And it's a discussion and overview of what has taken place this year. And so, we are trying to make sure that we get out in front of you the types of things that we do as instructional coaches, what kind of support we offer, and then also that we are open to discussion. And we do a lot of surveys and things of that nature to determine what all will be needed for the following year. This is something that has evolved over the last six years and has been really a strong support for our teachers. The other thing that we have also done is work closely with, uh, the professional development committee. And, uh, we just met recently. And since we've changed our days to full days, uh, we're really pretty excited about that because it will give us an opportunity to, uh, do a lot of professional development and do some things that we've taken instructional time, uh, throughout the days. And we'll be able to put that into those full days. So, we're very pleased with that. We've also worked, uh, with the professional development committee and, uh, any other committees that are trying to provide professional development, but to make sure that we include everything as much as possible on those days, still provide for teacher work time. So, the initial, I'll say tentative calendar that I came up with, um, and we did show this to our professional development committee, talked with the instructional coaches, but we talked about it. But we have just about doubled the amount of time for teachers next year to have for teacher work time. So, um, this year they had somewhere between eleven and twelve hours and next year they should have between twenty-two and twenty-three. That doesn't include like a lunchtime during that day because it is a full day. That's not part of that teacher work time. Um, it also allows for organizational meetings on our full days like in this, uh, January. It allows for our wellness fair, things of that nature, but things that have been important to our staff and our teachers. We want to make sure we get everything in there. We have some mandated training such as our, um, active shooter, some of those things we have to take care of. So, we're wanting to provide sections of time in there. We're also looking at KNE, which is our, um, evaluation system for the, uh, teachers and administrators. And so, any training time, we've been able to fit into this schedule as well. Our, um, hope is to have this ready to go, have it in the professional development handbook, so that when that is approved, you will have that as well. So, and, and all the teachers will have that so everyone knows, administrators, uh, teachers, what's going to happen on what day. And again, like I said, we have provided for PLC time. We provide for assessment for learning time, for our teachers to have work time and all those types of things. We have a draft right now, but as soon as that is, you know, in more of a finalized form, definitely we'll be getting that to you to look at. And, but right now, I have to turn it over to these two ladies. And again, uh, Mary Levy sends her apologies that she had an emergency arise, so.
Okay. Um, as Mrs. Rain said, we have a focused professional development that we have for this year. Um, we started the year with, um, some close reading training. We were able to do that district-wide. After we did that at the beginning in September, we broke out in sessions with every building and were able to work with small groups of social studies science teachers in the high schools and the junior high. Um, we've been able to meet with every grade level, um, in the K through six buildings on a monthly basis to follow up, continue to work on instructional strategies, strategies, cooperative learning, critical thinking, um, any other, um, topic that they need to work on. Uh, we also have had our focus for assessment for learning. Um, it's been very exciting. We're wrapping it up this year. We organized our, um, mission possible day, which will be occurring this Friday. And we're excited. We are, um, going to have an opportunity for our teachers to get to meet and collaborate on how students have been goal setting, which is a life skill that we all need to do. Um, we have seen it. We were able to develop a video seeing kids from kindergarten through twelfth grade, goal setting, figuring out ways to improve their learning, empower their learning. And, um, teachers will have an opportunity. We have it structured so that they'll be meeting vertically among buildings, an opportunity I think our teachers really would like to have more of, having such segmented buildings, something we're really working on so that our K two, third and fourth can work together more and see what each other's doing and help each other build those relationships and build the curriculum even stronger. Um, then we have also, then we have an also section here to talk about all the instructional support that we've provided for all of our teachers, including our meetings with our principals A plus program, working with the PDC committee, um, professional development, AIMS Lab, teacher support. We've also been working on curriculum and development. We've had, um, several meetings with our ELA team this year, um, because we have been working on our writing progressions, annotations, and of course, as you all are aware, we were purchasing a new reading series for this year, um, K twelve, which is a big endeavor. So, um, Mrs. Foreman will talk a little bit about that.
Um, I'm very excited to share with you the progress that we've made this year with our ELA selection, material selection team. I'm proud of how our teachers and our administrators have embraced this task. Um, they expressed, um, a level of detail in what they have done with reviewing these samples and the feedback that they've provided. So, it's, it's very exciting to hear, um, and see teachers anticipate, um, the, the excitement and selection of a new reading series that they'll teach with next year. So, I'm gonna kind of walk you through, starting with, um, where we began initially in the year and then end up with where we are now. Our textbook committee was comprised of a team of K twelve, ELA, English Language Arts teachers, Title One teachers, and then also, um, instructional coaches, Mrs. Rain, and two of our board members. So, we met in the fall to start the process and, um, explain the role of the committee members, examine the sample materials from several textbook companies. And then additionally, the instructional coaches and Mrs. Rain met with the administrators to share their expectation, uh, the expectation of their role in the process. So, then it was determined that the teachers would pilot lessons with the sample materials and then evaluate within their grade levels and their buildings as they reach a consensus on the top two companies. And the principals also took time to observe these lessons as the teachers were teaching with the sample materials. Then, um, the committee, the administrators, and the special education department chairs from each building participated in the final two company presentations. So, then this team evaluated both of the programs and then provided final feedback from their department or their grade levels in reaching the consensus for the selection of Holton Missland. And the program for K five is called Journeys. And then for, um, six twelve is called Collections. So, at this point, um, Mrs. Rain and I met with the, uh, special education teachers to review the consensus the team had reached so that, um, that we had reached that general education curriculum so that then they could coordinate. Um, I presented some options to them for, uh, the materials used in co-teaching or intervention or even like very strategic intervention supports. And so, they were able to review pilot lessons with those materials and then make the final selection. So, finally, the teachers began actually, um, getting numbers together for the teacher resources, for the student, uh, resources, ISBNs, that kind of thing, prioritizing their requests. And then Mrs. Rain and I have worked to prepare, um, proposals for the journeys and for the collections, as well as supplemental materials, um, for special education, Title One, and our high school English Language Arts, um, additional novel sets, literature for, um, AP dual product, that type of thing. Um, so, we are in the process of placing those orders. And our intent is to have the materials delivered before the end of the year with, um, the initial training scheduled May twenty-eighth and a follow-up training in September. So, as Mrs. Marchetti said, it's been a very lengthy and long process, but we've made progress and, um, have a lot of excited teachers about our new series.
I have a question.
Yes.
About your training.
Yes.
Um, you said you have two sessions. Will that be all you have or will you have more sessions?
Well, um, the plan is this initial first session, um.
Which is after school.
It will be, um, it'll be a rotation of probably two to three hours. I think the presenters said a three hour. So, it'll be a three-hour training then. And then the teachers kind of have the, the summer at their leisure if they choose to, because a lot of teachers have expressed in wanting to look through those materials and, you know, we like to get our hands on those things, not just read about them. Um, and so, then in the fall, the company suggested, and a lot of the teachers actually had this idea too, um, you know, let's teach with these materials first, kind of see where we are six, eight weeks into the school year, then have the presenters come back, do some follow-up training, um, as needed. And we're very flexible on how that's going to look. Um, and then another focus that Leslie, Mary and I will do, similar to last year, was the initial close reading training and going and doing these little monthly meetings with different groups, different grade levels. Um, we're gonna provide that same support with the new reading series. So, and we've actually kind of been doing that the last few months and kind of getting them used to, um, because especially with the six twelve collections, it's very heavy and digital material. And so, the company actually recommended.
I was gonna ask.
A lot of.
Technology. There's going to be training for that.
That'll be a focus for them to set up their initial, um, student enrollment, get their student accounts set up and how to manage the classes and stuff like that.
So, that's, that's what they're gonna do in May? And then you said something, an optional one in the summer?
No, just at their leisure if they wanted to look, you know, like a teacher's guide or something to flip through and kind of see.
And so, the textbook company is coming in May to do that one on the twenty-eighth?
And then? They'll come back.
In the fall?
In the fall.
After they've used it.
And I've even had, um, the representative tell me if needed, they can follow up.
Sure.
And that will be a role that we'll play too as well, especially when the writing, we want to stress, you know, and, and it's, it was very strategic planning on Mrs. Rain's part to do the close reading because when we started looking at these materials with the selection team, um, that was one of the criteria we wanted to look at. Do these materials, introduce close reading strategies. And our teachers, because they've had that experience and that foundation, could pick it up easily. And their life of writing, you know, we really want to get into the writing and that's what this will lead into. So.
Well, I was just worried about the training because I know there's lots of times they don't get adequate training.
Exactly.
Having them come back after school is out, that's kind of, it's not a mandatory thing for them to come, is it? Or is it?
Well, actually, it, it is mandatory that they come on the twenty-eighth. And we tried to avoid, um, that training as late as possible in the school year. But for the last six weeks since February and on, and even in our last, um, I don't remember when it was February, I think, presentations, we've communicated that clearly, that this training is probably gonna occur at the end of May, possibly, um, early June. And at that point, we didn't anticipate snow days would lead us up to, you know, that late in the school year. Um, but it has. And, um, the testing window this year for the assessment, state assessments was such a large window of opportunity. And you're talking about a hundred and ten teachers. It's impossible to get that many subs for in, in one single day. Um, and then lastly, the twenty-eighth was the, the day that the trainers could come.
Okay. And.
And compensate them.
Absolutely.
I was just gonna ask.
Yes.
Is there gonna be a stipend of some sort?
Yes, that is been clearly communicated as well to offer the stipend.
What is the stipend?
Well, at this point in time, we normally pay fifteen dollars. It's not a lot. Fifteen dollars an hour for someone to be here if it's considered non-teacher, I mean, non-student time. Um, so that would be a total of three hours, which would be forty-five dollars. And then we were going to provide them lunch.
So, what happens if they, if they already had plans for vacations or something?
We asked that they let us know as quickly as possible. We were hoping we might be able to, uh, video the training. They will not, of course, allow us to do that. Copyright laws. But anyway, um, we will, uh, we know that there are certain circumstances. I mean, they just, we can't get around it. You know, there's some, you know, whatever the case may be. And so, we're just going to work to meet individually with those teachers. There aren't many that we've heard from, really, maybe three or four.
I've had it. Yeah.
Yeah.
When did they find out?
Exactly the training.
About when, when the training was gonna take place? Because, you know, some of them, if it were me, like I did my timeshare stuff in January and I'd have been in big trouble.
And that's why we tried to let everyone know that, you know, it was going to be the very end of May, first part of June. We tried to say that all the way along. And we were hoping to do it.
All year you said that?
No, since about February. So, um, and when we talk about, I know the word, you know, we've gotten, uh, some comments about the word mandatory. And I, I understand that, but my thought is, is that this is actually, uh, something, the reason we're asking for teachers to be here is because it's very important that we consistently implement, implement this.
I agree.
It is very important that we give all students the opportunity. And I'm, you know, preaching to the choir.
Right. I know.
And then so.
But the early out Friday that we had in, in May was not available to the technical community?
Yeah. They didn't have that one. We were hoping for that.
Because that would've been a perfect day.
Yes.
To do that.
Right.
And we wouldn't have had to pay stipends and teachers would've been.
Right. I totally agree with that.
Okay.
It might be hard to do it in one afternoon to, because what we have, a large number of K five teachers that are gonna have to be split into two groups. And there's one trainer that does that. So, you're just having to flip off those groups. And then our.
The book company only has one trainer?
Well, um, to send to our district, they're sending another person for the six twelve group, that's a twenty-six teachers. So, and then we have a couple teachers, bed teachers that might be utilizing both of those materials.
Right.
So.
And we feel really fortunate in the, uh, presenters that we are getting. The ones that we had to present were excellent. And we've been assured that those two were not available. There are two others available, that, that these two are equally as, um, versed, well-versed in what they're doing. And, and the hard thing about publishing companies is oftentimes those presenters are marketing people.
Right.
And I have nothing against it. I have children. And I have nothing against it. I have children that do that, but, you know.
But then having to use the material and teach teachers how to use it, it's really hard.
It's certainly not the case.
This was really.
They had taught.
Yeah, they had taught.
That's awesome.
And so we are hoping that they come back in the fall.
I listened to your train, so, and it's about me not asking questions.
Get on to them about to pay.
What?
Get on to them about to pay.
Get on to them.
About fifteen dollars.
Fifteen dollars, they don't even pay for their, for their lunch or their gas here.
Their daycare. Daycare, maybe.
I just, you know, like that, I got in an argument with the guy over five minutes. I made twenty-one dollars an hour, and he wasn't paying me my five minutes. It cost him a lot more than five minutes. You, you don't, I'm sorry, ladies, don't look at my face or my voice, because it lies. I'm not mad, I'm not sad, but you just, you just can't keep going. The people expect them to work for nothing. Now, we're gonna have them over at the graduation, they, they do all kinds of things extra, and then we're gonna give them fifteen dollars?
An hour.
How about if we, I may, I move that we give them at least summer school pay, which was twenty-five dollars an hour, because fifteen dollars an hour is not enough to pay.
Well, I think we oughta, we oughta give them.
So, I have, I have a motion on the floor for Mrs. Petrie today.
We would love that.
The teachers, twenty-five dollars an hour for the training on May 28th.
If they make it worth their while and they spend a lot more time on that.
For the teachers that have to be there for the training on May 28th.
And not mandatory.
Is that, is that the correct motion?
Wait a minute, Mrs. Petrie said.
Yes.
Not mandatory. It's in the summer.
It is their summer, and I think that's kinda poor choice.
It's your summer, and it's not their fault that somebody decides we're gonna have this in the summer.
I agree.
We got Saturdays and everything else, ladies, that we can have this.
Well, what we would like to do is.
Well, hold on a second. So we've got a first on the floor, just a moment, just a moment. We, we have a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Change it, please.
I mean, it was the twenty-five dollars an hour.
I was addressing the pay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
At this point.
Is there a second? Mr. McCarthy. Now, for more discussion, before we go anywhere, Mrs. Rayne.
What I was going to say is, I understand that that doesn't sit well on the mandatory part. What I would like to say is, is that we would want to make sure that we provide that training for everyone. If they cannot attend on that date, then we will provide it in some manner, so that that teacher will be able to start the year with that series at the same, in the same way that everyone else. So we would work with those teachers individually. If we have to pull them, you know, during the summer sometime, we can give them still the three hours pay and work with them in a small group or individually.
We had the discussion of if, if we have to wait for that first to back, if there's some spare time in there, but yet they're not getting that twenty-five dollars an hour.
Right.
I just wanna be aware that if it's a contract date, if everybody's.
We have that timeframe, you're right.
If it works, and that, we don't know that it ever worked very well.
This stuff should not, and I'm one of them, I don't like people changing the rules in the middle of the stream, and me have to head back and get what I need to get across the stream, and that's what we're doing. We keep this going on all the time. And it's about time this board says, no, we're not gonna let you do this. Ladies, I did this, not about y'all. But it's about time for this stuff to stop taking.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any other discussion on paying twenty-five dollars an hour?
Change it.
To the teachers?
Please.
Can I have another question?
On that day of training on May 28th?
If they're gonna work.
Is there any other discussion on that? Those in favor?
No.
Those opposed? Six to one.
Now.
Were you opposed?
No, no, I was ready to ask another question.
Here's the thing. Now we should go on this mandatory stuff. It should not, it should not be mandatory if this is their summer off. You know, it, it, does it be like you, John? If you wanna go on vacation?
I have summers off, Bo.
I know you.
It's about the boy, yeah.
If it be like the board making a, a policy says the president can't go on vacation, he has to be here every day. Would you like that?
No, you can't do that.
And if we blow, but what I'm saying, did you know how it is? You should not make things mandatory when it's their summer.
Mrs. Petrie?
Well, and we, at TAB, we kind of addressed that, and I did comment, because I would've been kind of offended if in an email I was told it was mandatory, you know, encouraged me, strongly recommend, etc., so I think it was poor wording. I just wonder, would a day, like you said K through six, would a day when those elementary teachers are in their classroom in August, long before school starts, would be, you know, they're expecting to be there, work in their room, be more suitable? Did you, and it upsets me that a textbook company were spending over half a million dollars and they're not setting up according to our schedule.
Well, we asked, we asked because we wanted, and, and I'll clarify this, I, I did, you know, say, I want this to be a mandatory training.
Right.
And that was my choice, from the standpoint that I feel like it's important that we all had the same training, but we also offered and said, if there's something that is an emergency or otherwise, you know, let us know.
Which came, I think, came out after the email went out.
But, but Eric, that's strange.
Anyway, we, but the teachers wanted it earlier. They were hoping for it. Before school was out, we couldn't arrange it, then it became a lot of teachers, so we couldn't arrange that, so we felt, I mean, we can ask about an August date, but I'm just, not everybody comes back in the same timeframe.
The other question I have is that, you said that materials haven't been ordered yet, so if the teachers do not have the materials in their hands on that 28th, then it's canceled, I'm assuming?
No, they will have them.
They will have them, okay.
And we have sample materials anyway.
Because I've been in meetings where, okay, we're looking at a computer and going through a website, and that doesn't work.
I've been told by the presenters that this teachers will only need the teacher's guides for the first two units, a student book.
It'll be like a resource kit type.
And, yes.
Okay, so they will have, and access to computers.
Absolutely.
But we wanted to make sure all, that was one of the things that we definitely made sure we had everything before we even set that date up, that we could get everything working and.
Mr. Harrison?
Okay. So, here, here's the thing. You're a 12-month employee, right?
I am.
Okay, so it ain't no sweat if you're here or not.
No.
Right?
Not normal.
That's what me and my boss used to get into. I was a gnarly person, and he was in the shed when it rained, and I was home, and then he'd cheat me on five minutes.
Well, I'm not trying to cheat anybody.
But, well, we are, because when we asked the teachers to go off and be on vacation from such and such, and then make them come back on the mandatory, I wanna, I wanna approach this with a motion that it can't be mandatory. We have to stop this. Just because I'm the king, I don't, I can't do things like this. I, I gripe at this all the time. People, even the, the state does it. Send something down, and we gotta change in the middle of the year.
So what exactly is your motion?
My motion is not to make it mandatory.
Is there a second?
Or make it mandatory and everybody votes no.
Is there a second? Mrs. Petrie's second. So I have a motion and a second to not, to make it not, make it not mandatory.
Not to make it mandatory, and if, if we had to make it a positive one, then I'll make it positive and everybody votes no.
And so discussion.
Well, here's the, here's the problem that I see with that. You have to be trained on this material, because you're gonna use it in the fall, and if this is when the book company is coming, you gotta learn how to use it. Now, should there be an alternative date for those that can't come? Absolutely. Mandatory is a poor word. I agree.
Well, it is a poor word, and, and I don't like it.
Mr. Harrison, let her finish.
And it should've been done before school was out. You know, I, I think that early out, and next time we have those all-day things, we oughta be able to get it in all day, but that's not gonna help those teachers this year either, learn how to use it.
Lisa, this happens all the time. You know it does. You know it does.
Well, scheduling, it has to be.
Lisa, you can't be preaching this today.
I'm not. Would you let me?
Mr. Harrison.
Because I want, I want it to be noted that we need to plan better as far as our dates and with that, that book company, because they have more than two people.
Right.
You know, I know they're bringing in more people, but, but if we knew all year this was gonna be a training, that third, that early out Friday should've been put on notice a long time ago with those companies, you know. If we're gonna order from you, we want you on this day, you know. I know we didn't know until later on, but we knew, I know we knew at least in March, when we voted, right?
That's when we started, we asked them before, we asked them.
We tried to get those two presenters that came and did presentations, because the teachers strongly wanted those same presenters. And so we were holding out for that, and then, because the present, the, the representative I work with, she has trainers across the nation that she, because they flew in from two different places, those two people, and so then we were told that those two people could not come and present, because they were at a symposium.
I hope they're throwing in a bunch of stuff for us, because they didn't come.
I'll honestly tell you, we're getting at least double what we're paying.
If, because, and I know they give us a lot of.
They do.
Good deals, because this is our first year with it, but they should've jumped through big hoops to be here when we wanted them.
Well, I mean, I'll have.
Because, I mean, how much are we spending?
Over six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand dollars for that? I could've said, you know what, I can go someplace else, and I bet their story would've changed. It's kinda like that car dealer. You walk out and they change it.
Look, you know how it is.
Any other discussion before we vote?
But they need the training.
They shouldn't go along with them.
Do we have a plan for if someone can't make it? I talked about in the fall, in August, maybe mentor teachers for people that have attended the training.
Right.
Maybe put something like that in place too, so the ones that don't get it have an opportunity to get it, without a doubt.
Absolutely.
And Bo, I completely understand where you're coming from, but it sounds like we're kinda behind the eight ball with this, and, you know, these teachers do need to get this training.
That's right.
We can't go into August having thirty, forty, fifty teachers that haven't received that training, and then here comes time to teach that class, and they're standing there with the book, thinking, what, what do I do?
Hold on, I'll move forward. Mr. Stevenson, I, I'm not gonna be in here with you.
No, you're, you're fine.
But I've been on this board for 12 years, okay? Now, this ain't something that just comes up today. These people are professionals of coming up at the last minute, we have to do this, all is mandatory, da-da-da-da-da, and all that. Do you have anything from the state that says it's mandatory in your, uh, right there, huh?
No.
No, you don't. So, that's where I'm at. I never see a law that says, the law says this, the law says that, or it's coming now from the state Board of Education. I've never seen that like that. But everything, you'll, you'll see it, everything comes up at the last, very, but if you get burnt, and we say no, then we'll start changing.
And if we say no right now, who's getting hurt the worst, the kids?
No, 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 don't bring the kids in this. Mr. Stevenson, don't do that.
Mrs. Petrie? Mrs. Petrie?
Whether it's mandatory or not, those teachers are dedicated, loyal. They want to do the best, if, and they're gonna be there. Just the word mandi, I mean, I would've been there whether I was getting paid or not. I think it was a slap in the face for fifteen bucks, but they are gonna be there. I have no qualms with taking the word mandatory out and making it recommended, because I know those teachers back there are gonna do what they need to do to be prepared for their classroom.
Oh, they're doing their stuff all the time.
No, if they're not there on the 28th, they're gonna contact Leslie some other time.
Well, let's make it not mandatory.
It also gives them time to work on their stuff during the summer, 'cause I, I mean, if it were me, I'd wanna be prepared, you know, come August.
It's a very uneasy feeling to come in in August and to try to do a whole new series.
But we did up their pay a little bit.
We upped the pay, but we did not, they don't, they shouldn't have.
If it's recommended and not mandatory, then we can still get those in to, to work on it.
No, I'm not admitting it, because, because that's stupid. Make somebody come in on their summer off, and they should be out vacationing with their kids.
Do we have any more discussion, or shall we?
Well, let's go. Let's go. I'll, I'll take whatever comes to y'all.
Okay, so we've got a, we got a first and a second. On a motion to make the training on May the 28th on the new ELA curriculum not mandatory. Man by both, second by that. All those in favor of making it not mandatory, raise your hand. Three. Those opposed, raise your hand. Four.
I hope everyone in this house is calling and making good work tonight. Mandatory.
Yeah, I do have one, I'm sorry, I have one more question. There is ELA training summer 15, practical arts training summer 15, social studies training summer 15. So I, we were talking about ELA, so my motion pertained to the ELA, but I'm assuming it's the same type of thing. Are they still getting paid fifteen dollars an hour for training?
That has always been the growing rate, like I said. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to have that. I mean, that's a.
I don't wanna spend our budget.
Well, you are.
I know, I know, but I don't.
This is, I'm happy, like, when we're doing our curriculum revision, anytime we've done any kind of curriculum writing and revision, that's what we've, that's what we've always been.
Right, it's, it's like they would work, if the teacher would work on it on his or her own, then we would pay, you know, if they had needed five hours to look on curriculum, we would say, okay, fifteen dollars an hour, and you keep a timesheet, and we.
So this is not actually coming to campus to do that, okay? So that is with a presenter and all that kind of thing?
And we, this will be probably the largest, most involved training, etc., that we will have, because it's just K through 12 across the board, and it's so much, I mean, math will be, but, you know, we'll get to that point, but, and I, I will say, I apologize for the word mandatory. It wasn't meant, I wasn't meaning it to mean, you know, I just, I want everyone to know, you know, we really need to do this, because it should be, it's, it's going to help us with our series. So, you know, strongly advised or whatever, I just wanted people to know that this was something that we needed every teacher to be a part of. So, and I will say this, every, you know, most teachers, for the most part, want to be a part of it, and we were wanting to try and get that training completed prior to the summer, so that, because the request was really, we'd like to look at it over the summer.
Right.
So, that may sound strange.
Mrs. Marchetti, Mrs. Corbin, do you have anything else for her? We don't wanna take up anymore of your time.
No, sir, I think we've had much discussion.
Are we quick here?
So, so what, what I just listened to.
And I appreciate the twenty-five dollars.
What I just listened to, and I am not mad or anything like that, I'm gonna keep this, right, but what I just heard in your voice, that it's not about nothing but accommodating me to get this out of my way, and then I can move on.
Well.
That's, that's what I heard. I didn't, I don't go by just every word you come out of your mouth, but, you know, it's about what, what's easier on me.
Oh, well.
And it shouldn't be what's easier on people to make a hundred and two hundred people do, do what I want. I've never did that in my life. When I was a young kid, I learned, don't be forcing people to do what you want, or you're gonna get your nose broke. So I never did do that.
That was not my intent when I said that.
And I made sure not to say something like that around my dad, because.
Thank you very much, ladies. We certainly appreciate all of your hard work and everything you do to help our teachers.
Yes, thank you.
And our students.
And I appreciate all your hard work.
But.
Next, we're gonna move on to unfinished business, and we have, last month, we had an item tabled, it was a approval of change in tech rules and regulations, and we tabled it because Mr. Murray was not able to be in attendance, and we really wanted your expertise in this situation. So, Mr. Murray, if you would come help us understand the revision of the technology rules and regulations for electronic devices, student push.
Okay, last year, if you recall, we started the process of kinda getting ready for one-to-one, eventually on the road. We went out to bid and got bids on upgrading our network. Uh, we went out to bid and, uh, got bids on upgrading our network. We chose tenure, implemented that over the summer. And then in November, it was brought to the board about putting our faculty on to our Wi-Fi, which is part of our network project that we implemented last summer. And that went very smoothly, very successfully. And part of the original goal was also to get it to the point of where our Wi-Fi would be available to our students as well for their devices. Now, in, I believe it was January, the board, it was brought to them about revisions for the board policy that was removing some language that was prohibiting such activity. That's been done. So really, all I'm trying to do here is to align our tech policy along with board policy.
District policy.
District policy. So, that's basically what this is about. Now, a few things I want to assure the board of. Uh, the filtering that goes on with the public access, as I'm naming it, uh, is no different than what our students currently receive with their login. Uh, they will be limited to just internet access and access to the servers internally that we see that they need to have access. Those servers are infinite campus, group wise, which is not really so much for our students, that's more for our teachers. Students do not, uh, use that. And, well, at one time it was the web server, which is now on the public server, so that's a totally different scenario. So, but that's the only services that are available on this guest network internally. Questions?
Yeah, so the, the guest network is going to block the same things that a desktop in the classroom.
That is correct.
People are for it.
Yeah, you know, students can't get to, example, uh, YouTube, that's an example. And that won't go to through the guest access either. So their devices would not be able to gain access. So anything that is, uh, you know, SIP related filtered, that's what will still take place on that guest network.
So they can't use your Wi-Fi, but if they have Wi-Fi on their own phone...
Oh, that, we can't forget.
They still, I know, but they could still get on to those things.
That is correct, that's correct.
On their own server.
That is correct.
Because I could, I could bring my phone in and make a hotspot on my computer and have free reign.
That's exactly right.
So that, that's my question. Let me see, we're going to allow them to bring their, so they can, they can use their, uh, what is it, I5 or...
Wi-Fi.
Wi-Fi or I5, whatever they want to, okay. They can use that and then later plug your stuff into your phone, it's the same thing, isn't it? Or are they going to have a, a, a regular laptop thing, laptop or a phone?
They could, they could. I mean, with this policy, with the changes that I'm wanting to make here, that's allowing them to bring in a tablet or a laptop. They're already bringing their phone though.
Well, yeah, do you know why they're bringing their phone? Because we have nobody that says, we have a policy against this.
We don't have a policy against it.
We did have. What did we do, change that too?
Y'all did.
No, I didn't. No, wrong.
The board did.
Wrong, I didn't.
The board did.
Now, let me tell you the biggest mistake I've made, and that's listen country music.
Can we stay to remain to the situation?
Well, that's the same thing, I'm telling you. You're allowing to use this thing and put it in there now, you have to have it all the time.
Here, here's, here's one of the things that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mrs. Petrie.
Well, the one thing I was going to add, one of the things that, that by opening our Wi-Fi up, that does help our students that can't afford Wi-Fi for their phone, and at least we're providing something that's filtered. They're not getting another one. So at least it's filtered.
I wonder how many of those kids that don't have Wi-Fi access are ones that don't have laptops in any of them, you know?
Oh, and that's, that's very possible.
They're going to be using one of this school to begin with, probably.
Yeah, that's very possible.
Mrs. Petrie.
Okay, my, my question, my concern was an inserting of words into the policy itself. Students' personal electronic devices, listing those may be used during the instructional day in accordance with classroom rules and procedures, or classroom and building rules and procedures. I think that needs to be inserted there. I know there's a little clip at the very bottom that says, oh, by the way, but that's kind of like a by, building policy.
Yeah.
But I think it needs to be at the front because it is, you know, important and be more specific to classroom, um, rules and procedures as well as the building, classroom and building. Because, you know, as a teacher, I should have control of what my kids are doing.
We give that, that's easy.
So...
This is, this is not a, this is not a board policy, this is a technology usage.
Technology policy, right, but...
And this is to apply to all grade bubbles.
That's correct, that's correct.
And so they want to change it.
You know, and I understand each building is going to have different levels and different times.
Right, right.
If they're going to allow this to happen. We're not trying to change that here. We're just trying to say it's okay with the limitations of the building, what they want to do.
And I just want to add classroom in there. So with that amendment, I move that we accept this.
So I have a motion to accept the change in tech rules and regulations with the change that...
That after, during the instructional day, in accordance with classroom and building rules and procedures. And if you wanted to delete the last, you could, but just leave it there.
So that was the...
Okay, so where's it at, anything?
Okay.
In the red or is it in the blue?
In the red.
Okay.
Students' personal electronic devices, and it lists those, may be used during the instructional day in accordance with classroom and building rules and procedures.
And, Miss Wogan, you seconded that?
Okay, what's for classroom?
Rules and procedures.
Rules and procedures. I have it on my computer, but...
Discussion, Mr. Harrison.
Uh, what, what did you mean, their own equipment? What, what, uh, comb?
Crank?
Oh, it says, it identifies-
An iPhone?
iPods, players, MP3 players, laptops, tablets.
So what we doing is we turn around and give them permission?
Correct.
Okay?
It's the common thing.
To, uh, come in there and they can listen to their music.
Well, that's...
At the building, at the building, principal wants it to. We went through this, somebody's changed that policy year after year. No cell phones. I know a guy got, quit his job and one of the best teachers we ever had quit his job because the, the principal would not take up for him, he took up for the kid. Somebody along the line, the board's going to have to start standing up and saying, no, we're going to make a policy and you're going to stick to it or you leave.
Well, and that's why it was important to me that the teacher be controller of the classroom. That even though the building principal says this is okay, if I as a teacher have a sign on my door, which I've seen at the high school, no cell phones allowed, okay, that's my rule. And now that building principal has to enforce that.
But why, why should each individual have that right to make a policy that says it's the way it's going to go?
It's never a policy anymore, Bo, so...
Well, no, it's never a policy because they do whatever they want to do.
And every classroom teacher-
These are used for incentive as well. They use them for reward times.
Every classroom teacher has those, their own rules and regulations. That you walk into my classroom, this is what I expect behavior wise, dah, dah, dah. And as long as mine does not conflict with school policy, with building principal policy, that's what goes on in my room.
This, I guess this is the best way to say it. Why should we need her and take time out of our lives to sit on the board to make policies or rules or whatever? And then people can do whatever they want, whatever they want. The dress code is everything.
I agree with you there, but that's a whole different topic.
Well, you might go for that.
That we will address.
So we have a first and a second on this, on revisions to this, to these tech rules and regulations. Is there any more discussion to remain to these technology rules and regulations? Hearing none. See a raise a hand in favor of these changes as amended, corrected by Mrs. Petrie. Six, those opposed. One, Mr. Harrison. Motion passes, six to one. Next, on the new business.
So that's not, that's, it's done, no further review, we're back.
That is done, yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Murray. Okay, next. We have, do I have a motion to approve the bills for payment in the amount of $471,711.14 as presented? Mr. Lewis, Mr. Harrison, is there any discussion?
Hearing none.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the nurse services, and I meant to call and ask this question, I don't have time. What does H. Smith, Schmidt Nurse Services that are like from $290 to $213, over $1,000, what is that? Is that...
Yeah, we...
We, we, we want...
Okay. Later, okay.
We'll talk about that in the regular session, Beth.
I'll still vote and I was just curious.
Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none. Raise your hand for, to, for the motion to approve the bills for payment in the amount of $471,711.14. Seven to zero. Okay, um, we have lots of committees with the board. Uh, hopefully you've had time to look at board committee and, or at the board committee and committees. And hopefully you'll be able to, uh, let me know which ones you want to be on. If so, we can approve. If not, we can look. If you guys need some more time for the next... Salary and welfare. So we've got to have salary and welfare, yeah, that's right, because it was Mr. Harrison and Dr. Maynard and Mrs. Stringer that were, were on the salary and welfare negotiations.
Well, I don't know if I want to be on either of them, if, if nobody's going to back me.
Oh, she's already, she, we're good, you got to replace us.
For what?
All of them.
All of them, she's taken both.
She's retired, she can just...
I just picked out one that I could do. I can't do them all.
You're good. That's woman eat right.
Salary negotiation?
Oh, no.
That, like, that's, the ones we, the one we got here is salary negotiations. Is anybody...
Who's on that now?
Right now, we had, uh, Mrs. Stringer and, and Dr. Harrison.
Well, I think I should, if I'm on there, I think I should be allowed, because I want things my way. I should be allowed to pick who I want, just like everybody else.
Mandatory.
I don't think that's how...
Yeah, mandatory. Mandatory, I, I think that's the way I should do this because...
So are you willing to stay on, Mr. Harrison?
Oh, I'm going to stay on, yeah, that's it.
Are you going to go, you going to show up?
Do I have two other? I mean, I am willing to...
I have no qualms with the knowledge that my daughter is...
Yeah, and, yeah, for...
Well, that shouldn't be allowed.
I have...
Dan, can you?
That's names?
Yeah, yeah, could be on that.
Want that check mark?
What? No, that's...
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
I think the people that's got relatives there should not be on the...
Well, the difficult part about that, whenever you get out in, in Missouri, and while we're not a small little town, is that you got to live here, so you're related to a lot of people. And that's just the way it is.
If you got a relative, you shouldn't be on the board. It's easy.
Do you have any relatives at all?
Nope.
Anyway, so...
No relation.
Yeah, my niece. You know your niece.
Sorry, I didn't mean to...
See how easy that is?
Okay, who has, who on the board has an immediate family member that is... They, yeah, immediate, defined as...
Live in the household or...
Sister-in-law, all that, that's...